...the Buchanan City Council of Order. I want to thank everyone for being here tonight, as always. It's always a great thing to have our citizens with us as we discuss city business. As we normally would, and let me make sure we don't have a public hearing now. So as is a normal process for us, and a tradition, we will start with the moment of silent prayer and meditation. Thank you again, everyone, for being here. And I got to tell you, that's probably one of the best things I ever get to do every Thursday night, is our pledge of allegiance. Makes me happy to do that. All right, as we're looking over our agenda, we have a couple of great situations or great things that we get to do tonight. First thing is, I have a proclamation as the city of Buchanan bicentennial. I have no one to present it to, but actually, in all truthfulness, we are presenting this to the citizens of Buchanan and indeed, the citizens of Upsher County who also play a part, of course, in our great city. I shall read it from here, unless anybody wants me to stand up to do it, but once we have done this, the council has noted, we will have it on display out in the foyer for everyone to see, because in all actuality, when you think about it, in 1816, four years after the war of 1812, somebody came out at the front and said, "You know what? We need to have a seat here." And they actually went to the state legislature back then, was then, of course, Virginia, and said, "Try to do this." And they sent him back, and letters, and said, "Absolutely, now you have the city of Buchanan." So it's an amazing thing, and I really am proud to be a part of such a great city and such a great legacy, I should say. I'll tell you what, you know what I like to do? I always get to read them. Has one of my council members liked to read this proclamation? I can't think of a better person than our veteran. I can't see, but I'm...
Ron's a veteran, too, but he can't see as well as I can.
I get to read them all the time, and I think I should share that.
Here we go. Proclamation. Whereas Friday, January 15, 2016, marks the 200th anniversary of the day in which the General Assembly of Virginia passed an act establishing several towns in which 20 acres of land on the Buchanan River. The property of Robert Patton Jr. in the county of Harrison was to be laid out into lots with convenient streets, be established a town by the name of Buchanan. And whereas, on the occasion of Buchanan's bicentennial, we reflect and honor the history and success of Buchanan and its people. And whereas, we reign in the third century of the city of Buchanan's in spirit the promise of tomorrow with the dignity of yesterday. And whereas, on June 20, 2016, on West Virginia Day, Mayor Rick Edwards invites citizens of Buchanan to participate in this historic day of observance. Observance. Now therefore, I, Rick Edwards of the mayor of the city of Buchanan, declare January 15, 2017, as Buchanan Establishment Day, and call upon citizens of Buchanan to lead in celebration for the upcoming year. In testimony whereof, and the Buchanan City Council here on two, our hand calls to be affixed the official seal of office proclaimed at the city of Buchanan, county of Upsher, West Virginia, on the 21st day of January 2016, following the 200th anniversary of Buchanan's establishment and the 240th year of the independence of the United States of America, signed by Mayor Richard Edward, Rickard, Richard Edwards, sorry there. And all members of council, and I'm proud to be serving with you when this is done.
You know, there was a lot of questions about us celebrating the 200th anniversary of an establishment. When you think about an establishment, that means somebody took the opportunity to go ahead and go to the state, at that time, the state of Virginia Legislature and say, "You know what? We're going to build a city here, here's what we're going to do." Now, in 1852 is actually when the charter was given by the state of Virginia for incorporation of the city of Buchanan. So in all actuality, between the 1816 and 1852 dates, this city became what is known as the city of Buchanan through all of its citizens, and of course, at that time, it's rural areas, a lot of farmers, a lot of agrarian society. And I can't wait until 1852, where we can really actually, well, in 2052, celebrate the fact that it's 200 years of a charter city. But in this case, 1816, that's an amazing, amazing situation that we find ourselves in, so I couldn't be prouder, and thank you very much, Mayor, for reading that for us as well. Did I see that back, is that the proclamation?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Now, on the other, as you'll see under Recognized Cervical Health Awareness Month, I actually gave this to the Family Resources Network last week at their meeting, where they have meetings with, there's a lot of organizations that come together, particularly for family-related discussions. And so I was honored to be able to give this proclamation to them as well, but in this case, I will go ahead and read it, just so everyone and the citizens as well are aware of cervical health awareness. This, of course, if your wife and your daughters, whom primarily this affects, has ever been affected by this, is a very devastating disease. And luckily, now, there are a lot of ways and means by which such a disease can be caught early. So I was very proud to do so, and I'll go ahead and read this one for you. It's a proclamation of the West Virginia Cervical Health Awareness Month. In 2015, an estimated 2,000, oh no, 129, no, that's right, because I scratched it out, 1,290 new cases of invasive cervical cancer were diagnosed in the United States. In 2015, an estimated 102 West Virginian women were diagnosed with invasive cervical cancer. In 2015, approximately 4,100 women nationwide died from cervical cancer. Researchers believe that non-invasive cervical cancer is about four times more common than the invasive type. Since 1955, the number of cervical cancer deaths has significantly declined due to the advent and the use of the PAP test. The West Virginia Breast and Cervical Cancer Screening Program is committed to preventing unnecessary disease, disability, and premature death due to cervical cancer. Therefore, January 2016 is proclaimed as Cervical Health Awareness Month in the mountain state. All citizens are encouraged to work together to promote and improve the health of women and to increase awareness and understanding of women's health issues. I think that actually means a round of applause. Ladies and gentlemen, I got to tell you, proclamation is one of the funnest things that a mayor gets to do, and I look forward to doing that all the time. One last thing, we have Mr. Philip Campbell of the Self-Defense Class, who I do not see in the audience with us tonight, so unfortunately, he will not be here, but I will give you an idea. I did speak to Mr. Campbell. He is looking at pulling together a self-defense class, not only for anyone, but primarily for young adult women, or even, well, any women, so that they can protect themselves at any time they find themselves in danger, or in any kind of a situation that they feel very uncomfortable with. I applaud Mr. Campbell. This would be the second attempt that he has made to do such a class. He did one last year. It was very well attended, from what I understand. It was about a dozen 16 women, primarily college students, who, if you watch the news, find themselves in the situation that they need to be able to defend themselves, and I applaud him for it, and I welcome him back again the next time, at our next meeting, to discuss that with us. So unfortunately, he is not with us, but I do want to make sure we recognize him and discuss that.
Mayor?
Mayor.
And also Lieutenant Loudon helped with that last year?
I was looking at Lieutenant Loudon to see if he was going to give me indication he wanted to speak on that, but he was shaking his head, and I would offer the floor to Lieutenant Loudon, if you'd like to elaborate a little bit on that class.
Philip Campbell approached me again this year, and had asked if I could arrange that again. Unfortunately, you know, I'm the middle man, you know, between myself and I believe Sergeant Mole with the Hudsonville Correctional Facility. He's a certified self-defense instructor, and so between my busy schedule and Sergeant Mole's busy schedule, I finally just had to give Phil Sergeant Mole's phone number and let them make the arrangements. But, you know, I'm more than willing to help, you know, participate in that, so.
Yes, we definitely do his need here, and I would encourage, once we do come up with a schedule, I'd not only encourage just our young colleges, but any young woman or any woman to take that class, because you never know anymore, that you might find yourself in a situation, and it's really awesome that you have that ability to protect yourself if you burn.
Does he have a class for senior citizens, too?
Yeah.
Because I find that we need to protect ourselves sometimes. Tim, all right?
I don't know if there's a liability for senior citizens in that kind of a class, we'd have to look into that.
Department and board reports, we'll go right into that. Mr. Doss, City of Midstream, sir.
Thank you. A few updates this evening. One item I want to talk to you about later on in the agenda will be our mid-year, fifth-quarter fiscal year budget resolution revision. I do want to give you an update on our 2016-2017 general fund budget. The departments in general fund, fire, police, stocker, and street have all submitted their budget requests. What I would like to do is ask that we schedule a special meeting, a budget workshop for budget meeting, if you will, for Tuesday, February the 9th, at 7:00 p.m. Tuesday, February the 9th, at 7:00. Actually, pretty impressed with the department budgets and general fund and their submissions and requisitions for this upcoming fiscal year. We have a few items that we do need to talk about. For the most part, there really wasn't any, any out-of-the-ordinary requests from our departments. I'm looking at Chief Gregor, I'm not picking on Chief, he's the only one from general fund here today. But I just want to know, this is part of the budgetary process by law that we have to follow. We do have to have budget hearings, budget meetings, to discuss the upcoming general fund budget. So again, Tuesday, February the 9th, at 7:00 p.m. Don't mind. We do have in front of you, I've passed out, an outside agency or entity fund request form. This goes along with our budget. Want to submit this to you all to take a look at. Tried to really simplify the form for all those outside agencies, make it heat-friendly, so they could kind of get to the point of their requests and their goals and objectives for fiscal year 2016-17. You do have that in front of you, if you don't mind taking a look at it, it's very simple. We do have a deadline on that for February the 5th, this year, February the 5th, so if council will approve that, take a look at that tonight. Again, it's pretty standard, basically, the agency's name, and contact the agency, their requisition amount, their goals and objectives, and how it relates to the citizens of Buchanan and the city. If you'll take a look at that, I'd recommend that you approve that. What I'd like to do is get that form out to all of the outside agencies and entities, so they can have a couple weeks to get their materials in order, so we can have that submitted for our February 9 budget meeting. And of course, if we need to call any of those entities or outside agencies in to talk a little bit about their requests, they're requesting a little bit more than we've provided to them in the past, and that will give them the opportunity to come in front of council and discuss their requisitions. I'd recommend that council approve that form this evening.
We do, but let me ask council to take a look at that real quick, since I believe this is probably the first time you've seen it. It's, and as I have always encouraged, before we actually pass anything, I usually like us to use it the first meeting, the two weeks, to look at it, and then come back before we discuss it, so we all understand it totally. This, in this case, is a very simple request form, so I would entertain a motion at this point, if you feel that we should use the city of Buchanan 2016-2017 budget request form.
Tim moved.
I have a motion by Mrs. Alba. I have a second by Mrs. Simons. Is there any discussion on this? And I know, unfortunately, David, you did not get a chance to read it. Would you like me to read it?
I can abstain, just what you want.
It's a very simple form, but if you feel uncomfortable with it, we could...
David, do you want me to read it out loud? It might be a good thing, even TV.
Well, it might be good for the TV.
All right, I'll actually read it.
Okay.
As soon as I get back to Mr. Tim. Thank you, sir. You can read it, you can read it as long as I do it, same time. This is city of Buchanan 2016-2017 budget request form. The city of Buchanan has developed a simple form for outside entities to make budget appropriation requests for city funding. This form and financial funding request will be considered for the upcoming 2016-2017 fiscal year budget for the city of Buchanan. Please fill out all of the form or provide any additional supporting materials pertinent to the request. In order to be considered for upcoming fund appropriations, the form must be submitted to the city by Friday, February 5, 2016. The address for budget request from submission is, of course, the city of Buchanan, Attention Budget Funding Request, and it's our address, 70 East Main Street, Buchanan WB26201. Now, it says, "Note, upon submission, council may request to have a meeting with your particular agency or entity to further consideration and exclamation regarding this submitted fund request." And then it asks for the name of the agency or entity, address of the agency or entity, name of the contact individual of the agency or entity, phone number of contact individual of agency or entity, amount of funding requested for the fiscal year 2016-2017, a previous amount of funding received for the prior year. And then in the back, it has three questionnaire questions for you. One, briefly describe the mission and purpose of your agency or entity. Describe in detail the agency or entity goals and objectives for fiscal year 2016 and 17, and how do these goals and objective impact or benefit the citizens of Buchanan? That is the form, that is as simple as you could possibly get. It's only a way for us to be able to provide to the citizens, if we approve a submittal of a request, what they're doing with it, and when a year later, if they come back again, we can have something to gauge by which the previous funding had been done. Does that make sense to council? Mr. Thomas, are you feeling like you're a little bit more?
Yep, I have one suggestion, though. You said February 5?
Yes, sir.
The, you know, our budget is not due to the state until the end of March. I think it might be helpful to give another week or two for people to submit the report.
Mr. Doss, what do you think of that, sir?
As far as, if there's any, if there's any difference in request, an entity is asking for 5,000, they've always asked for 5, and they ask for 10, we'll probably have to get together and have another session or another council meeting to discuss that.
I would not disagree with Mr. Thomas, that they may be a little short on the timeline for this year. So in that case, I would entertain a motion then to approve, but with the amendment of the date, and this is depending what you think, Mr. Thomas, of, what is the last date of February, 28?
Yeah. 29. Well, just make, you know, February 15, or 16.
You think 15's all right?
If they're just hearing about this today, give them a bit more time.
All right, then I would entertain a motion, as I mentioned, to approve, but with the closing date of February 15.
And ask a question?
Well, we can't ask a question, but do we want to amend the motion to February 15, unless that is part of your question?
It's part of my question, because I thought we set a date for the 9th of February for a budget review meeting, and I wondered if this was going to affect that.
Actually, not quite. When we talk about the budget review meeting, we're also looking, primarily for the first meeting, of course, as you're well aware, we look at the budgets from each of the departments. That, in itself, takes enough time for a two, two-and-a-half hour meeting. I think that a separate meeting regarding budget request, request from our budget should be a separate meeting, so that way we can actually discuss and deliberate the issues that are being requested of us for appropriation.
We'll have more than one meeting on the budget.
Absolutely. So then, I would entertain a motion then. Well, let me ask you this, Mrs. Alba, would you like to rescind your previous motion on the, what is submitted? As far as, you made the motion, didn't you?
Yes, yes.
Would you rescind that?
I accept the motion with just the vision that you use a different date.
Just amend the date to the February 15, perhaps, is the date?
Yes.
Okay, please mark that on your forms, Mr. Doss, and please mark that as a correction on your form. So we now have a motion to amend the previous motion for the city of Buchanan 2016-2017 budget request form with the addition of the February 15th date as the deadline for submittal. Do I have a motion?
So, uh...
I got a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. Any discussion on that?
Call for questions.
I have a call for a question from Mr. P. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. All right, so, Mr. Doss, please continue.
Yes. Next item is a walk trail update. The city has submitted a letter of intent to apply for lighting around the walk trail. Lighting would include 25 period-style lights, which would also provide light around the West Virginia Wesleyan College Baseball Field and Railroad Avenue. This would also add another lighted section linking the downtown area to the walk trail. The proposed project is installed in-house, meaning our street crew does the work, but total project cost would be $75,000, essentially the lighting and some concrete, and the city's cash match would be $15,000. Now, this is just a letter of intent to apply. We'll be approaching council, I'm sure Jerry Arnold will be approaching council when we actually go to put the application together, but this is just part of the bureaucracy, if you will, of grant writing, a little nonsensical, but anyway, we have to issue a letter of intent to apply. I'm sure, again, Jerry will be approaching you all with some more specifics about that as the deadline to actually apply gets closer. Questions on that?
Any questions?
No, just, this is a letter, basically. The next item is kind of interesting. I had an opportunity to go to the West Virginia Municipal League Legislative Conference last weekend and spoke to some actual city managers, and spoke to some folks in Clarksburg, some folks in Morgantown, and Martinsburg. Talked about a variety of subjects. One of the things we talked about were building permits. We talked about development going on in those areas, and quite honestly, there's a lot of development in those regions of West Virginia. And went home and thought about this a little bit further, and I thought about our home rule application, you know, some of the things that we do, some of the tax incentives we've offered for businesses and trying to develop, and, you know, some of the programs that we're doing to try to encourage individuals to keep up on their property. I usually don't do this, I usually don't step out of my position and really get involved in anything legislative, but I'm going to ask this. As a city, the way that we have our current building permit fees, which we proposed in ordinance 398, which we just proposed and passed as a council about a month ago, just became active. $2 million facility that's built in Buchanan, West Virginia, is going to pay $30,000 in building permit fees. Contractors of VNO, that's another $40,000, that's $70,000, the $2 million project. It's about 4% of that project. I wish we had $2 million buildings being built in Buchanan, but that just doesn't happen here, as it happens maybe in other municipalities. From a residential standpoint, you know, we talk about property maintenance, getting people to do things to their property for the betterment of the community, and if a guy or someone wants to put a roof on a house, or wants to put siding on their house, I'm really sure the message we're sending with the, with our building permits at this time. From a budget standpoint, we have a part-time building inspector, does a bang-up job, it's a great job, but with the current permits, we're really covering costs of that. Not sure what kind of message it's sending, I'm not trying to talk politics here, but I guess what I'm asking is, what I'd like for you all to do is repeal section 39802 of our building permit fees. With that, that would be on the next agenda, because it's not an agenda item here, section 39802 of ordinance 398. Put that on the council agenda for consideration of repeal at the next council meeting, and then add, put together a committee, which would consist of the building inspector, council members, the contractor, and the city treasurer, so we can really take a look at that.
Counsel, my pleasure.
Uh, Mayor?
Yeah?
I voted against originally, and I'm still against those fees, so I'd like to make a motion that we repeal that ordinance.
Okay, we cannot make a motion, but what we can do is have it brought to the next agenda to do that. It's not on our agenda. Mr. Doss is making a suggestion, and a repeal. Well, let me defer to our city attorney, who may have a different insight on that.
Well, I can prepare a repeal of that ordinance and have it presented for the next agenda, or sooner, if that would be council's pleasure, I might suggest a special call meeting, but if that would be something that council feels that strongly about, I can put the ordinance together to repeal that, and...
I want to say something. Ordinance 398 itself, is it good ordinance? It prescribes the International Building Code.
Right.
We need to have that portion of it.
39802 would like to be...
Is a section within 398, that's correct.
It's the fee that I'm...
So it's the fee structure we're more concerned with, not so much the wording of the document that has the ordinance.
And, Mr. Mayor, I voted for it, and I'd like to change my mind, because I've done some research on my own with other cities also, and had a chance to talk with a couple of people while I was in Charleston, and so, and that definitely pushed me over the hump to change my mind. So, David, here I am.
Thank you, Mr. P.
Quite frankly, Mr. Mayor, I'm embarrassed that we have ordinances that we keep writing and then end up repealing part or all of them. I think perhaps we should be taking a bit more, be a bit more careful in when we pass those ordinances to start with, and work everything out, hash it out beforehand. If Michael thinks that this is a good thing, and financially, him being the financial officer, and we're getting along, I'd be willing to look at it again also. I don't want us to go in the hole, but I don't want us to put anybody in a position that they can't afford to do their remodeling or whatever because of a fee that we may have imposed. I'll be willing to look at it again.
And I want to remind council and citizens, you know what? This ordinance was before you three times. We gave it to you as a draft. You should have read that draft, okay? First. Secondly, you should have looked at those fees that was in that first draft and decided at that point that, you know what, these fees are not comparable to whatever it is. There's a reason why we're having three readings, technically, of an ordinance. It's your job to look at this ordinance, read it, see the fees, and figure it out. Now, I don't want to be like I'm admonishing you, but that's exactly why we do what we are doing, as opposed to the way it was previously done. I do not have a problem with readjusting the fees. Here's my problem. I do not want to repeal the fee structure back to the way it was back in 19... When was the last time the fees were changed?
Probably the 80s.
Probably in the 80s, like everything else. What I would do, though, is encourage Mr. Doss to give us a comparable, what could be for size of our town, a fee structure that is not stuck in the 1980s, okay? That's what I would ask this council to do, if you would, as a separate item, but I do not think that we need to repeal to the basic 1980 prices that we paid for that, and I believe that is 10 bucks, 12 bucks?
It's very...
It's very minor. We're not doing it to raise revenue, but we do need to get our rates to the 21st century, for goodness sake, or at least to the lowest part of what we consider to be the 20th century. So I just wanted to get that out there, you know? I don't have a problem with us having it put on the agenda for the next agenda, as far as a repeal, and I would like to also have asked council, without objection, to at least have some numbers that we can look at that are reasonable enough, that are not, that are better than what we have now. Does that seem fair?
Yeah, I think Michael suggested that we repeal it, but at the same time, he's coming back with a recommendation on what would be maybe a more appropriate or more encouraging fee structure than what...
David, I just think my thought is, is that, you know, we have all of these ordinances to try to get people to clean up their properties, and, you know, again, it'd be nice... to try to get people to clean up their properties, and, you know, again, it'd be nice, we had two million dollar buildings being built up through town because that probably means their jobs, but, you know, if someone wants to do something to their house, we should encourage that. It's going to be better for the community. I'm trying to get off my soapbox here and just say, I've really given this a lot of thought, and then conversating with other city folks around the state of West Virginia. We just don't have that kind of grant. I wish we had, you know, I wish we had more of that success, but we don't. Maybe that will come one day, but for the most part, this is one of those things where I don't think you put us on the same level of like a Morgantown or a place like that, which is seeing a lot of development in that time, and probably this would be suited for them. They have a whole Department of Code Enforcement and Building Inspector, you know, and we don't, so. And Vince is doing a great job.
Mrs. Sidemenz has a question first. Mrs. Sidemenz.
What's my question? It's just that I did read the ordinance, and that's the reason I voted against it, was because I thought the fees were too high and that we need to come to a better rate.
And not to go off the subject literally, you guys are probably wondering, why is your grimace, and why has he got this little blue pillow? I slipped the other night after a meeting coming out of here, and it was at my house, and I've got a sciatic nerve killing me, so I keep adjusting. So, if you see me grimace here while I'm moving, it's not by anything anybody's saying. It's because of what I said. Heck of a pain right now, anytime I go to move, so. Thank you very much, Mrs. Sidemenz. Mr. P, you are going to ask a question.
Mr. Doss, I understood that part of the fees that we were going to collect from building fees and implementation of the increase was going to pay for the raising of buildings that we tend to need to get rid of under this program. How does that affect our getting rid of some of these unwanted and dangerous buildings?
The reality of it, running up in your five years, I don't think we as a city have raised a building. We have, in the last three years, and Dave, you were on the Housing Enforcement Board, we did talk about putting money in, and we actually did appropriate money about five... One year, ten thousand, and the rest, the other two years have been five thousand, even in this current budget, we had money in there, we've not touched it. But we do have the ability through Home Rule now that if we do go in and we have to raise a building, or these are obviously are the extreme or conditions, or extreme conditions, I don't think extreme is a word, I just created a bushism, but I think that the ability now to assess, directly assess properties through Home Rule will give us the ability to collect any money that we have to use from taxpayers' dollars to go in and fix some blighted area or some issue. Again, we have due process, and we're not going to go out and take out buildings, but we do have a lot of tools in the toolbox that maybe we did not have, Dave. I'm looking at you. For issues that we faced in the past on housing enforcement, we've certainly strengthened our resolve in some of the things that we can do to better the community, I think, so we have never, five years I've been here, we haven't raised a building, and we've put money constantly back. That's actually one thing I look in this general fund budget this year. One of the discussions we need to have for next year is, do we want to keep appropriating money into that because we're appropriating money, which we could probably put somewhere else, to be honest?
Well, Mr. Doss, I can think of a half a dozen buildings right now in the city of Buchanan that need to be raised because they're a danger to the health and the well-being of the people living beside them. I think we should get with the program and try and spend some of that money that you've got backed up there to getting rid of some of those dangers.
Consult with Vince, Vincent Smith, we'd be happy to take a look at it, and if you let Vince know or whatever, I could, if you have to let him know, I'll talk to him on Monday and see what his status is on this particular building.
You should bring a list to the next housing enforcement meeting. We haven't had a meeting for a while to, you know, take a look at what are the areas that we ought to be focused on.
Thomas, we had a meeting in November. It was only two months ago. It's only like quarterly.
I think we should meet once a month.
I would agree, and quite honestly, and this is not just for the safety and health of the citizens, it's also for the property owners that live next door. They're actually causing the cost of or the appraisement of their properties to go down. Citizens have been complaining about forever, and we actually done it, now we got a way to do it. Perhaps the fees may not have been the way to do it now that we have them, but we had to follow the code. We got thirty days until that code is in place so that we can actually start putting out the notifications that either you clean up your properties, particularly those folks. Remember, there's a lot of these folks here that have these properties, do not live here. They live in California, and they live in Nevada. They don't care what's happening to their properties here. This is the way for us to make them have to take attention to their properties. So, I think we've had enough conversation, we've got quite a bit of agenda then. Unless there's, without objection then, I would approve that Mr. Doss go ahead and submits to the next agenda his suggestion. I would also ask that you give us some other numbers as well that we may have to consider with that. Is that what you're asking for?
Are we going to form a committee to discuss?
Oh, you want a committee?
I think that would be...
Do I have any idea from the council to sit on that committee?
I'll be honest, me too.
I've got Pam, and I've got Robyn.
You know that a giraffe is a horse put together by a committee, right?
Yeah, well, I would also ask Mr. Thomas to be on that committee.
All right.
I think you bring a lot of insight to that. So, you have your committee, Mr. Doss, you have your permission to have that entered on the next agenda. Are you ready to move on to the next subject?
My next item will be discussion of a resolution twenty sixteen oh-one.
Thank you, Mr. Doss. Any question or comments from Mr. Doss on his financial payment or his report?
I have a quick question.
Yes, Mrs. Ray, I'm sorry.
Upstate Arts Lines has an open funding request from some time ago. Do you want us to resubmit that with your new form?
Maria, I think just to maintain the consistency of the form, I can get your form and you can fill out, it's pretty simple, it's probably just going to rehash what you had submitted, but since we have this process, we're going to do now, you know, that way we have it all, we can just put it in front of council.
Okay, I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you, Mrs. Ray. Thank you for all you do. Move on, please, thank you. All right, any other questions or comments from Mr. Doss? All right, thank you, Mr. Doss, keep up the fine work, we appreciate all you do. Chief Gregory of the Police Department?
Good evening. Don't have anything really major to report tonight, we are very busy with just different investigations that have been going on, closing out the old year, beginning the new. We are finishing up our annual statistics, and I'm currently working on the annual report for 2015, and do anticipate bringing that before council at the next, my next presentation in February, so we're currently working on that. We have brought two different interns from Wesleyan College on the Police Department for the spring semester, a lady by the name of Amanda Lewis, and a gentleman who you guys just saw a month ago, Stevie Frame, he's one of our VIVs, but he's interning with us for a grade this semester. So, they will be working with us and riding along with us between now and May, and we're looking at bringing two more actually on in the May term, and we'll introduce their names at that time. And that's all I have tonight, my first question.
What?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Here's the thing, January's always short, February, I make up for it, February. Yeah, when I bring the annual report, it's...
What I would like to do... I'm going to go with that one. As I think everyone's aware that this could be a very dangerous weekend, if you don't mind just giving us a public service announcement on what we could be either prepared for, and I want your officers as well to be as safe as possible this weekend, but if you don't mind, you may give us a couple of...
Absolutely. We are in a state of readiness, so we've been in coordination with the local, I'm sure, OEM, receiving updated bulletins from them as it's passed on through the governor of the state of West Virginia. I have instructed all of our officers to top off fuel in all of our cruisers so that we're ready as we approach tomorrow. Everything is currently ordered to be charged as well, phones, radios, what have you, so we're ready as far as our operations goes. Public service to the community, obviously, with the road conditions, the oncoming weather, if you don't have to be somewhere, don't risk it, don't go out in dangerous conditions and put your life or others' lives in jeopardy. Not sure on the status of the governor plans on calling a state of emergency. I know that we are under a winter storm warning at this point, but the future will tell on what the timeline will be, the governor will call that. If that should occur, again, do not be on the roads if you don't absolutely have to be unless it's a bona fide emergency because you just put yourself in others' and harms' way.
And Matt, am I correct that if the governor does call a state of emergency for roads, that if you elect to go out on the roads, especially the interstates, and have wrecked your insurance company doesn't cover you?
I'm not sure about that. I really can't comment on what the insurance policy would be. I do know a state of emergency is just that, you're not supposed to be out and about unless you have an emergency or a bona fide reason to do so.
I recall that with a little reminder, three percent, they made a change, eighteen ninety-three?
Nineteen.
Blizzard ninety-three.
I will also let council know and the citizens know that I have also engaged our new disaster annex, which means that each one of our departments within the city of Buchanan are on standby in case of an emergency situation, either from a law enforcement or from an emergency response situation, that we are going to utilize whatever department tools we have, be it vehicles, personnel, to either help in any situations, particularly with traffic control or rescue or whatever it takes. Our departments are on standby to help in whichever way they can as well, so we're hope we're ready, we're hope we're prepared. All we got to ask is that citizens please do the same within your own home.
And watch out for your neighbors.
Yes.
Since we're on this subject, do we have any plans for a warming station?
That's what I was just fixing to say, Pam. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'm an OEM, but I haven't, they haven't, they won't call us out to the last minute, but the people of the community, you need to know that last year in severe storms, the Chapel Hill Methodist Church, we were open all night long, and also at the Presbyterian Church, okay? We had gas heat, we had power, we didn't lose power for some reason, that's a good thing, but we had food and we had cots, and we, like I said, were open all night long, and people could come in to get a hot meal and come in and stay. We had several people who were elderly that came. They lived out in the country. I believe the, an analyst brought them there, if I'm not mistaken, but keep that in mind. If you lose power, don't stay there, just bring your medicines with you, your, just something personal, and then call for help if you don't have transportation, I'm assuming, right?
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, so that's probably, that's where they'll start again this year.
Okay.
So, yes, thank you very much, Chief. Tell you guys, please be safe this weekend. We're looking forward to hopefully not just a apocalyptic type of event that they're talking about, but I know West Virginians are always prepared, and we're prepared for this before, it's not the first time we've seen it, but we just want to make sure, it's been a while since we've seen snow, and it's kind of a quantity, so let's just make sure everyone's safe. Thank you, Chief, very much for your help. We appreciate all you do. We have Kelly Arnold of the Water Department with us. Mr. Arnold, I believe it's your turn tonight, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, unlike Matt, I do have my end of year thing there.
You have what?
My end of year, what we accomplished this past year. I'll just read over it real quick. As far as leaks, we had thirty-eight this past year. As far as new line, we've installed three thousand eight hundred fifty-nine feet, that's various sizes. Valves, we've installed twenty-three valves. We've installed sixteen new services, twelve renewed services, and three hydrants, and that's just more or less the line part of it. To get in part of the other, we had finished up Meadowland Services and all the main line is completed out there. We had one leak this past month, that was at Mud Lake Road, which was just a fitting that we needed to end up tightening up. That was put in probably in the seventies, started leaking, so we had to dig down and tighten it up. As far as on Tom's side, Tom and the mayor went to West Virginia Water Day in Charleston. I don't know if either one of them went to expound on that or if they...
Well, as Tom wants to.
Yeah.
It was actually a great day down at Charleston. We had an opportunity again to go see our, each one of our legislators, as we did last weekend with others, but we really wanted to express the importance of a, first of all, the Source Water Protection Plan, which is ultimately a plan that we have in case of any type of a disaster, not unlike Charleston's water issue when the chemical leak went into the river, so we have a plan in place. In fact, I'm very happy to brag that the city of Buchanan has already submitted one of the first, we are actually an example of, and a lot of other cities will be basing their water protection plans with ours. Having said that, I will also mention that because of this plan, we may not have to have an issue like Flint, Michigan has. I don't know if anybody's aware of that situation, but that is the last thing any municipality needs to be dealing with. Tom and I had an opportunity as well to lobby on behalf of the, well, not lobby, discuss and have an open dialogue with our legislators on some of the needs that we have from the water treatment plant facility and also, I dare say, the sanitary plant. We also discussed the NPDES and the EP issues that we always have an issue with. Another one that's really coming up is the American Waterways Act. I don't know how many of you are familiar with that, but the EPA from the glorious national government have determined in the American Waterways Act that a certain amount of any water that's running through any state or any city or any county is actually American or United States of American governmental water. We disagree with that, we don't want to see the government at that level overseeing what it is that we do with our water because we feel that we're very proud of the fact that we take care of our water very well and that we do not need the oversight from the government to do so. That pretty much wraps up the fun that we had down there, there was a lot of walking involved, but he and I are very proud to have been able to go represent the city of Buchanan, and I will tell you, all of the people that we talked throughout, you, down there from all the different counties and the municipalities are very, very impressed with the way in which the city of Buchanan handles its water supply and its sanitary supply. They're very, very impressed with the plant tour that we did for YouTube last year. In fact, a lot of those municipalities are using that as a tool for their communities, and they're doing the same thing. So, I can't tell you enough how proud I am of Tom and of Jerry, of cour-, I mean, Jerry, Kelly, of course, the work that they do and the accolades that we get on behalf of those two and their crews and their staff for the city of Buchanan. So, that pretty much wraps up the water, I believe. Am I correct?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. You may continue.
The other thing I'll mention on Tom's side is he attended the Clean Water Act at the college. Do you want to talk about that?
As a result of the chemical spill in Charleston, of course, safe drinking water is for most of most West Virginian citizens, so Wesleyan hosted this clean water conference, brought in some special interest folks from all sides of the aisle, I guess, so to speak. DEP was represented from the regulatory side, we were there as a utility, there were some environmental groups there, and we just, they showed a movie called Elka River Blues. It's probably online, if you want to Google that and watch it, it's a very interesting documentation or documentary video on how things transpired and how the people handled that in making the new legislative rule for the state of West Virginia. So, anyway, we had a panel discussing Q and A after the movie, and it was very interesting, and I encouraged our citizens at that meeting, as I do always, get involved, help us come and understand our issues and our challenges, and help us find solutions for those challenges.
Very good, thank you, sir.
The other thing I have is, on the last week of November, we received a thousand radio read meters. I'd like to compliment the crew, they have installed a little over five hundred meters. This month's been a little rough so far, and the colder weather, we can't get those in, but...
Meters. Kelly, I'd like for you to share, if you would, and just, you just don't go put a little meter out there. What are the, what's the purpose of these meters, and what do they do, how do they affect us going, doing all that work?
Well, I was going to get in that a little bit later, but we'll go ahead with it.
And speak it in Mary's words, for Mary to understand.
I'm not engineering word, so I can speak it in...
Kelly and Mary's language.
Yeah, London's terms.
There you go.
Basically, what it encounters is, you know, installing meters. PSC requires us every ten years to actually change... us every ten years to actually change out a meter, retest it, and it can be reinstalled. January fourth, I think it is, I'm gonna look at my notes here, two thousand eleven, President Obama signed the law about lead issues, where you had like, I think it was eight percent allowed. A lot of our meters are pre, where they have, you know, a good bit of lead in. Tom can attest to this, that he's done the lead and copper samples and we're well within it. But it's because of the regulatory part that we can no longer reinstall those meters. And some of those meters, to give you an idea, two thousand one, Neptune started putting out low lead meters. And then they went to pretty much no lead meters now. We're allowed to have, I think it's point two-five percent. Two thousand fourteen, they started enforcing this. So, we've discussed it for years about whether to go radio read. We had went partially radio read, it was around two thousand four. We installed some at Meadowlands. That was, Beryl Smith was here, it was a pilot study. We went with Sensus. We installed them there and their main selling point was the antenna didn't have to go through the valve lid or the meter box lid. It didn't work as great as what they said it would, but we still used them. So, we went ahead and gave them a second chance later on when we had to install meters at the housing project, which was about fifty of them.
Yeah, I remember that.
So, what we done over there is we said, okay, Sensus, we're gonna give you another chance. You've got a new improved meter, which it's called an eye pearl. And I'm not downgrading anybody else's system, but at the time, we already had a license for the older radio read meters. They could not get us a license for the new meters, the eye pearls. Therefore, we had to return those meters and we went with Neptune. Neptune was able to go out to Meadowlands and program those meters where they could all be read with the Neptune antenna. That's just a little bit of history with the meters. But to make a long story short on it, I mean, it's, it's not just going and installing a meter. And that's what I'd like to relay to everybody here. When you go read a meter, it's not just walking by, they're not touched. You know, four thousand lids roughly has to be lifted, you have to look. Takes roughly thirteen days to read each meter. Sometimes that can go a little longer. With the radio read capabilities, once we get them all installed, we get just three foot of snow, it shouldn't really affect us in reading. You should be able to go down the street, pick them up. To give you an idea, with some of the new technology that we're using now, we can go to things like Jenkins Ford and pretty much pick up the meters at Meadowland. So, to me, that's, that's a significant from going to, from thirteen days to hours, possibly. It's better for the building. Ambi can attest to this that it's...
Much more efficient.
And it's not only, not only does the meters, when you read them, is it for water, but it also helps Tim's department get a paycheck because the water that is read there is for server two. Some of the other points, I mean, right here's a couple of meters I can show you, which you'd be looking at. That way people could see them. This actually is what would be coming through the meter lid now. So, if you see one of these, you've got a radio read meter in. It's an antenna, picks up. Antenna hooks here. Council wants to look at these. Just don't lose. This is one of the older meters. And as you can see, it's got a little bit of fog in it. And what can happen is that when the meter reader goes through, is he could actually misread. I mean, not to his fault, but he could actually misread this, which could cause you all higher bill.
So, we're gonna send them around. In fact, we have Mr. Thomas, Kelly, if you'd like, if you do it from Mr. Thomas, and grab it from Mr. Thomas, you can take a look at it and then pass it around the audience. Let's let everybody take a look at the...
This is the same type of meter.
This is the old one I'm looking at.
That's the old one.
This looks like a Geiger counter.
But it's a labor-saving device.
Yes, there you go. A money-saving device.
Just to give you an idea, Mr. Dawson and I have talked about it. You know, in the long run, we can probably not replace two positions. If you look at the gas savings on the vehicles, we're estimating somewhere around ninety-five thousand a year savings after they're all installed with them. I mean, they'll eventually pay for themselves. And to give you an idea, most of the bigger cities, most of the cities are going with them. Elkins has had them for well over ten years. And with this type of meter that we decided to go with, they was the low bid. But also, as you replace them, you get the newer style head, you know, and it still will, it just keeps on adapting.
So, this, this will come through your lid?
That will be through the lid, yes.
And...
In the sidewalks, what we probably will do, if you have a meter in sidewalk, we'll leave it below because it'll still pick up. It's better through the lid.
Yeah, I was, I was wondering about how easy these are damaged with running lawnmowers over them and...
Well, there's another good, there's a lot of PSDs that actually recommend that you don't even run over their meter lids for the simple reason, if somebody or something has caused them to not be exactly right, you could actually fall in and get hurt. So, they recommend you weed eat around them or, I mean, but...
My meter barrel is right beside my driveway this far, and it's really difficult for my wife to miss that.
Well, you probably have one of the better lids. There's different styles of lids, there's different applications. One is more traffic bearing and there's, you know, non-traffic.
Once you're all installed, annualized savings will be almost one hundred thousand dollars.
That's what we're projecting, right, Mike?
For next, by next year?
Well, I mean...
Once they're all installed.
Once they're all installed.
Yeah.
The other thing is, what's really great about it is it also allows us to be able to determine leaks even at a, at a minute mount, as opposed to before, we had to wait until after a month, maybe two months before his customer decided or figured out that they had a leak. This way, we can determine if there's a leak in a line somewhere at a much faster, much efficient rate. In fact, we can actually almost pinpoint where the leak is at. So, we don't have to go searching and digging before we can determine where that leak is at.
The meter will actually register, it records ninety-eight, or ninety-six days of hourly reads. And it takes a read, I want to try to get this right, every fifteen seconds, and then it will record up to ninety-six days of hourly reads. So, if you have a leak and you pretty much want to protest a leak or something like that, you could almost, with the belt clip, after we get it, install and get everything in. You can do a print out or you can look at it and say, you had a leak around this time, instead of trying to guess what was going on. I mean, maybe it helps jog the memory, maybe, you know, it's a commode leaking. It'll show if you have zero usage going through it this time. It has a reverse flow indicator, which will show if you're actually, when your water's heating, that it's forcing it back out into our system, which is backflow issues. It provides the leak history. It eliminates estimates as far as, as Ambi, I seen Ambi shaking her head on that because estimates are rough because if the customer would actually have a leak during the period we had to estimate because of the weather or something like that, then the bill could be much higher the next month and then the customer calls in and they're upset. But there's, there's a lot of different things that it benefits. And just like I said, with the meter reading itself, everybody pictures this ideal circumstance of going out, lifting a lid and you look in there and you get a reading. That, that's totally off-base because it's, it's a meter barrel and there's water that can infiltrate it. It covers a meter up. And if you've seen the meter readers walking around reading the meters, it would be difficult for them to carry everything they needed. So, a lot of times, they try out what they call tubing it. They put a tube down through the water to try to get a reading. So, it eliminates any, any human error. And that's what we're looking at, is to try to do the best we can for the customer as far as charging them the best, you know, on the field. And, I mean, it's, it will pay for itself in the long run. And like I said, again, there's no, the lead law comes into effect, so, I mean, we have to change them every fifteen years and test them. So, our meters will tell you that it's that old, that in two thousand one, you know, we're, to give you an idea, West Virginia American Water, they go waiver because they're private. They can go every fifteen years or a million gallons shown on it. And the best way to describe that meter is it's your tax register. That's the way I would describe it. And I've read several articles about them. I'm a little specialist on them, but they categorize it, they register just like a speedometer on your car. A lot of people thinks that's going to register faster than what, you know, times a bit won't. The way it is, it has gears in it, those gears break, or that's going to get slower over years. So, right now, when we put this in, it's going to be probably the most, you know, efficient years as far as readings and how much water's actually going through it.
Are these only fifteen years old?
Pardon?
Are these only fifteen years old?
I'd have to look at the date on that one, Pam.
I mean, okay, are these, are these brass or are they...
That, that is brass, but that brass has lead in it there.
Nothing can be recycled?
Yeah, the brass can be sold and put back in the water department. But they'll have to be stripped down to just, but that will be put on the back burner until we get them in.
You're gonna have four thousand of them though, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But our water doesn't run through anything.
And that will also go back into the water department's funds to help with this.
Does this mean it's, it's easier to read the meters now? Does that mean eventually you'll save the manpower?
Yes.
Maybe potentially not replace someone that you would have had.
Correct. That's what we was discussing earlier.
You bought two, correct?
Possibly two. And possibly trucks. I mean, I was looking at trucks, you know, as a thirty thousand dollar item. Some of our trucks is two thousand fours. And we keep putting money in and money in because we had talked before whether to replace the truck or keep putting money in until we'd made a decision what we was gonna do. There's no sense of buying an extra new truck now if we're gonna go with these riggers because it's thirty thousand dollars and then you figure it into ten years, I mean, plus the maintenance on it and the fuel. Right now, I'm figuring the fuel was two dollars a gallon, where several years it was looking four dollars now.
Can you get these to transmit right back to the water plant? You don't even have to go out?
You can get other equipment that they'll can transmit right into City Hall.
City Hall.
Eventually. Right now, with the handheld we have, you know, we have to go to certain areas. But like I said, you're looking at hours instead of days.
I understand. We're, we're small compared to a lot of the larger...
To give you an idea, Fairmont just went through a meter change, fourteen thousand meters. I know Clarksburg just, they've got two different systems. They've got Sensus and they've got Neptune. They just went through six thousand. Elkins, whenever they had them in, theirs put in years ago, they actually had a contractor build it. Contractor got theirs in six months. We're not gonna do that. It's gonna take us some years to build because we're doing it in-house. And as I've told Michael and the board before, you have to actually drill the hole in the meter lid, install the antenna, change a meter out. And it's not all, like I said before, you either dip the meter out to change it. So, sometimes on good days, you might get as many with, you know, six or seven of us changing, you might get as many as fifty. But like this week, when it's below zero, you're heading off to open the lid on the meters because it'll freeze it off there. And that's the same way with reading. You can't go out and read when there's single digits unless you have the radio read, then you can go make the reading. Is there any...
I didn't realize, excuse me, Kelly, I, and I should, I do, did realize, but it just kind of, you said that, how much service or manual service that we do in-house within the water department, because there's been many other occasions, you know, it's kind of like Jerry Arnold too, in that, in that department. We do a lot of services in-house rather than contracting it out. We're, we're fortunate that our people are like he's asked.
You know, and I'll piggyback that by saying, not unlike the sanitary department with the pista grid and the...
Yeah.
We did it in-house with an engineer. We didn't have to pay the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build that thing. We did it for just the materials and the, and the, the labor of our own folks. I gotta tell you, I can't be prouder of our departments because they're forever saving the citizens a lot of money. And people don't get that. And that's, that's the sad part about it.
Yeah, yes.
As much as we can applaud them for it, we need to keep, continue to do so.
And I think sometime it would be appropriate for, again, Kelly and Tom to take a look at where our water and sewer rates are relative to other municipalities. Because, you know, we, we, I think we as citizens tend to lose sight of that on a comparative basis if you don't have it presented to you. And, yeah, I know years ago, we used to do that occasionally. And we were very, very competitive as far as a low-cost provider relative to many, many municipalities in the state. And, and I, I haven't seen anything like that in the last number of years. And I think it's something we'll look at again. Because it's something we'd be very proud of.
That's untrue, quite honestly. And I would let you, Mr. Dawson, but I'm gonna correct him on it and tell him that he is...
Okay. You have seen it? I haven't seen it.
Yes, in our last water raid, we actually had a raid study. And this raid study told us, we were at the bottom third percent top.
Right, okay.
And remember that? Remember that discussion?
Yeah.
And we're like number sixty-three out of three hundred and some on at the bottom.
I forgot.
So, yes, we do do that. And if we look at a sewer rate increase, which is ultimately gonna happen, we will do the exact same thing again. And hopefully the citizens will hear us and as well our city council members. Mr. Kelly, oh, go ahead.
It's just a public service. You can actually get those rates on the West Virginia Public Service Commission for Water and Sewer.
Absolutely.
Well, it's very, we're really good, very mostly.
You're absolutely right.
Kelly, thank you for sharing and enlightening everybody about that. Very proud of you.
If you all would like a, like I said, this is a brochure on what we have. And if you want to educate yourself more, then if somebody calls you, you're more than welcome.
Oh, you got enough for all of us?
Ah, it should be. And any other thing I have as far as the meters is, you know, if you want a listing of the streets, I can give you the streets that we've done. We've been working more in the Tenerton, Brushy Fork area, because that's cycle five, and also out through Shawnee and that area. We have pretty much all of Shawnee done except for Rigger and Ambrose. And Brushy Fork, I think we have thirty more. But I've got a list of the streets. And as I said before, the best way to tell if your meter's been changed, if you see the antenna, then you know you're on, got a radio read. The areas we will be working, which I told the mayor, I would try to get this out there is, you know, Ambrose, Victoria Hill, Rigger Street, Brushy Fork, Stoney Run and Deer Creek. And the reason it's jumping around is while we have the meter guy out there reading, we've got to try to be ahead of him because we don't want it to overlap change meters while he's actually trying to read them because then the bills will get confused and Ambi gets upset. And when Ambi's upset, nobody's happy. Right, Ambi?
Mr. Arnold, do you have anything else, sir?
Nope.
Question or comments for Mr. Arnold?
I would like you to stress, please, how important it is for the citizens not to remove those lids to connect or disconnect water or anything, especially in this cold weather.
It's very imperative that you don't raise the lid or break the seal on it because it stays fairly warm, keeps it from freezing. The cost of replacing, you know, say a radio read meter even now, than the labor with it. And that's what, I would love to be able to see us be able to recoup some of that back if we could actually, that's another, another deal. But, and another thing I would encourage is people to not get in the meter barrels because there's potential for leaving the lid off for one thing. And now there's been antenna in there hooked to the meter. If you break that, then we've got more expense on that. So, I mean, that's just... I had a gentleman call me the other day about, he said, I see this on top of my meter lid. How am I gonna shut the water off since you're not supposed to be in the meter? I said, but I'll give you an idea. Why don't you dig down outside your meter barrel, put you a valve and then you shut your whole system down? He said, I like that. Who can I get?
I remind you, when I was a kid, the best place to go find a frog though is in that little... All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelly.
Mr. Arnold, we appreciate all your work. Mr. Landis said thing with the crews out at the water plant. You guys do a fantastic job, as you heard as well as I did down in Charleston. So, thank you so much.
Yep.
We have Tim Rock, our sanitary sewer department.
Good evening.
Say hi, Tim.
Let me start out by saying that...
Let me start out by saying that we are advertising for a new sewer department superintendent and applications are, we're taking applications up through next Friday. So if anybody's interested in that, they need to come to city hall, look at qualifications and apply for that position. So with that said, let me go on to the collection system. We're, we kind of finished up the main part of Victoria Street before the weather hit us. We still have to do Marie's Road, but we're probably going to wait till the weather's a little bit better. We have a job to do out at Phillips Dairy Road. They're building some more new condominiums out there. So we have a sewer extension that we're working on right now. We're taking advantage of weather to do equipment upgrades, do some excavator repairs. We're rebuilding track-o buckets in our own garage with our own people. We're, we're working on things that, that we're not able to work outside, so we're doing maintenance projects. On the plant side, we just finished today with a two-day DEP inspection and verbally it went very well. Of course, we haven't gotten the written report yet, but verbally I think they, they did an excellent job. That's about all I have.
I'll add to this that I had a visit from the Department of Environmental Protection today about our sanitary department and Mr. Rock. I'm very pleased to say this guy cannot say enough great things about what we do in our sanitary department. The work that they do as far as. And I'll be, I'll be honest with you, that's the first time I've had an actual governmental official from the state come to me and tell me what a great job that these folks, your crew, you and Sam in particular, do out there as far as any of the upgrades and the improvements that the sanitary department has done. He again, not unlike what I was talking about with the Rural Water Association, uses the city of Buchanan as a means or an example of what are the right things to do as far as a proper maintenance and upkeep and advanced thinking and development of a plant. And I dare say, if you want to take a look at Elkins, and you want to see what kind of rate increase it would take to be able to build a facility like that because perhaps maybe the ones are taken care of as well as this one, which was built at about the same time. Yep, Mr. Ledlow played a part in that as well. Then you really should because I guarantee you again, the citizens of Buchanan are saving tens of thousands of dollars a year, hundreds of thousands of dollars over a term of period. I just wanted to throw you that. I couldn't have been prouder when you came in. I thought for sure, oh my gosh, here goes a DEP, I'm going to get some sort of fine. Because when it comes to the city gets whose names on there and gets it, gets it. So I certainly appreciate the fact this is a good one and I can't say enough about that. Council, have you got any questions or comments for Mr. Rock?
I just want to ask if that job act has been listed in the paper?
Yes.
Has it been in there very long and have you gotten any applications?
It's been in there more than a month, maybe it's been in there.
We advertised in the paper and we advertised on NPD. It's happened a couple of other places, but we, yes, we have about a dozen applications in right now.
Good.
And the closing date is next week or this week?
The twenty-ninth is the last day.
Twenty-ninth is the closing date for those applications. Any questions or comments for Mr.? Yes, go ahead.
If it's called a sanitary plant, how come I handle sewage?
It's a much better term. But now that you've went ahead and recognized yourself, I have missed you. I will add as well that Mr. Rock, myself and I dare say, dare say, Mr. Cordes on here, if you appreciated the, if you appreciated the water treatment plant facility tour, you're going to love the sanitary plant.
May I address that?
So you can't wait for that, stand by for that. It'll be you and I starring that one.
You want to address that?
I ain't going over there until you change that.
Dennis said you want to address that.
As long as he's dressed, that's fine. No, I'm kidding.
Anything else for Mr. Rock? Did you say you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, we're going to tape the wastewater treatment facility at the end of March, beginning April. They recently brought the older VHS copy to me. I copied three DVDs off it and you got a copy, wastewater plant got a copy, and we at Channel Three got a copy. That way we can blend in the old with the new as requested.
That's very good. And you know what? Thank you for that because I want to thank Channel Three and Rodney for all the work that they do, not only behalf of Taping Arts and its county commissions and all of the civic organizational events that happen, but also because they, they are a full supporter of the city of Buchanan for its citizens. So thank you, that. Thank you, Mr. Rock. We appreciate it and your crews. Please stay warm. Finally, but not least, Mr. Scott McClure, McClure Code LLC, city attorney. So you have a story to talk.
Thanks. Scott McClure, city attorney, got just three or four issues, couple. I was going to speak to the first meeting of the year, but wasn't able to be here. The first issue is a part-time police officer ordinance that the mayor and Mr. Doss have mentioned several times. So currently we've got a very preliminary draft put together that I want to share with Mayor Edwards and also Michael Doss and hopefully have it as a draft form on the next agenda for council's review. Got to make sure we do this as accurately as we can. It's a pretty novel thing as far as the home rule proposals across the state. I think there's only two and somebody's came after us to do one. So it's, got to make sure we stay within the confines of the pension law and the civil service law and don't step outside those boundaries there. So again, preliminary draft prepared, going to share with the mayor and the city administrator and hopefully next agenda, first meeting in February, have it ready for council's review. The second issue is the Sudden Lake, basically four aspects here, but the most pressing one or the, the one we're going to bring forward first is the head-in lease. Been in negotiations with Michael Kellerman of Sudden Lake and basically two issues. One was the rate and the second issue was taxation. I think we pretty well got them resolved, I believe. So we'll have something to come forward, hopefully first meeting in February again. The other issue I think is a, the franchise agreement, a lease for the property, which will follow suit. A couple more small matters. One is the animal care control ordinance. The mayor's provided me some proposed changes from the committee. And, yeah, I don't know if you really said it or not, mayor, but I'm assuming you want me to incorporate that into a new draft and come back again with it, which we'll be prepared to do. Maria? Yes. So we'll put those together and have them ready for the next agenda. So I've just briefly got a chance to review them, but we'll certainly put those in there and come back with them. The last issue on the permits, hearing a little bit of different information. I think probably what I need to do is wait until I get some direction by this ad hoc committee to say if we're going to remove the permits, the fees altogether, or if they're going to come back with some different proposal. Would you agree with that, Mayor Edwards?
That's what I understand.
Okay, yeah. So I'll just wait to hear from somebody on that issue. So if the, if the new rates are different, then we'll put those in there. If it's to repeal them all together, then go back to the previous rate, then I will take my instruction from council and this committee and prepare those accordingly.
And I'll add to the animal care control commission discussion. I think we had a very, very open, if I can say very open, a very community-controlled discussion. There was no animosity, there was no nothing about how we need to change. David Thomas, Mary Alba for being there. It was a great meeting. Alyssa, Alyssa was there.
And Rob and Kia.
And, and.
We all came together to make it work.
Good job, Avery.
There were heated discussions occasionally.
That's okay.
But they were productive. They were.
Grace is the first to prevail.
It's part of the process. It's, well, you all put those together as it is, the committee will bring back to council. You guys can debate it again or?
Yep.
You've got enough.
All right, any other, well, let's wait for this thing to come through real quick.
Can we pass an ordinance about that train going through?
Move the tracks?
It might be like our other ordinance, it's kind of unenforceable.
Did you say raise the tax on it?
All right, any other questions or comments for Mr. McClure? All right, thank you very much, Mr. McClure. We appreciate all you did.
That's it. Good to have you back. Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, if you'll take a look in your package, you'll see a correspondence from Sudden Lake notification letter. Guess this one. Additional fees and cost of service. Ooh, go figure. Somebody's raising fees. I don't know why they do that, but they do it. We're looking at a dollar per month for standard rate for HBO, two dollars and ninety cents increase on the broadcast station surcharge. Okay, so that's, of course, we might have heard of that while we lost some of our last channels the last time. And take a look at the rest, two dollars and fifteen cents if you really want to watch all the football. You know what? All I can say about that is there's a reason why people have to raise their rates and unfortunately that's inflation and that's life and you're going to have to get over it and that's the way it goes as long as we can do it in a way, or anybody can do it in a way that is supportive and hopefully not too invasive in people's budgets. Having said that, next you have the American Cancer Society Relay for Life event in JaBo Park on July sixteen, twenty sixteen. I can't tell you how excited I am to see that happening.
Me too.
You may be aware that normally that is out at the, at the middle school. We're going to have it downtown and I think that's a great thing. Any questions or comments under the correspondence? All right, moving right along then, we have the consent agenda. In your packets, council, you have the approval of the minutes at the January seventh Riddler Council meeting. You have the approval of the building and wiring permits. You have approval of the payment of the bills. Approval, no, wait a minute. Okay, in your consent agenda, approval of the authorizing the mayor to issue a notice of award to try and construction RE water system improvements or RE regarding. And E five, approval for the mayor and assistant recorder to access the Freedom of Information Act online database, which I'll discuss in a minute. What I do need to do though is, we need to flip out E four and bring it down to F two. Okay, here's what we're doing. You can't approve authorizing the mayor until we read the resolution first. Do you understand what I'm saying? So we got it a little out of order there. So we're taking E four and bringing it down into the F section under strategic issues for discussion and vote. So just so we're all on board. Your consent agenda at this point, unless anybody has objection with that, which I hope you don't because you can't go reverse. All right, so then, under consent agenda, approval of the minutes, approval of the building and wiring permits, approval of the payment of the bills and approval for the mayor and assistant recorder to access the Freedom of Information Act online database. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as submitted? I have a motion by Mrs. Simons. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mrs. Cooperrey. Any discussion or comments on that?
Can you discuss the?
Freedom of Information Act online. You're going to love this. The Secretary of State's office has took it upon herself and the state that anytime there's a FOIA request from anybody, it be public utility or governmental agency, anybody, that they now have a database for all such requests. And it's up to the organization, entity, governmental body to report to the Secretary of State's office when they receive such a request, what the request was, what you did about the request, how much you charged for that request, and then the outcomes from the request of that FOIA. There are very strict rules, and I'm speaking now on the recorder hat, that anytime we get a Freedom of Information Act request, we have a certain amount of days, seven days and or five working days to respond to that and at least let them know that we have gotten the request. And that either we can fulfill the request very simply by sending them or giving them the information, or we have to have some time to find the information. For instance, I'll give you an example. Let's say that a company calls and wants freedom of information and they want to know all of the purchase orders we had for the last three years. All right, that is something that you could actually legally ask for. That would be up to us, the city recorder and the administration staff at that point. Then to go back, luckily we have a digital database, we could do that, but that's in the same old, we can look at that. But let's say they asked for something nineteen ninety-eight before, we had a database. We now have to go downstairs into the boxes and physically go through each one of those to find that information. It is expensive, it takes time, from away from our people. And if you're looking at three years of purchase orders, all the copying that needs to be done by that. So there is a fee that is asked, I think it's a dollar in our case, what is it, AMBI? I'm sorry, seventy-five cents per page. In a lot of cases, if it's a very simple thing, that it's only one or two or three pages, we don't charge for that. But when you're asking for three years or something, then yes, we've got to recruit something from it. So back to the original thing, the Secretary of State's office has decided that all municipalities, governmental organizations, yada yada, now has to enter this database. The only people that can do so are either your city clerk, which is the same thing as a city recorder, except elected, a city clerk is actually appointed. And a, in this case, AMBI, because since I do two things, in some cases she would also have to fulfill that and as the administrative executive, executive administrator of the city hall, city government, Mr. State's city government. So that's exactly what it is. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir, but why?
It's micromanaging.
It's micromanaging and they want to make sure that any FOIA requests are actually being answered and that there are no excuses on why a municipality or whomever is requested of it. I'm not sure of any other reasons, you'd have to call actually Secretary of State.
And what if we don't do it? What's the results if we don't do it?
I don't know, but I'm not going to go against the Secretary of State.
What's that question again?
What if, what if we didn't do it?
What are the results, fines if we don't?
Yeah, I mean, I would.
So far, I'm not so sure there is. Well, actually, you know what? I forgot Mr. Stump was here and he gave us a very good lecture at the municipal league on exactly this subject. Mr. Stump said, no, is there any, and I hate to pull you up on something that's not related to your thing, but I.
I was waiting.
Are there penalties?
Well, there's a, the requirement for the database with the Secretary of State's office actually comes from provisions to the FOIA act, which occurred last legislative session, so in legislature twenty fifteen. The database went effective January one of twenty sixteen at Secretary of State's office. Now, as to whether or not there are any fines, the question would be, is it a violation of the Freedom of Information Act under the act itself? Because there are provisions for penalties under the act, not in the regulations adopted by the Secretary of State's office, but under the act. So the answer to that is probably, but I think the, the purpose behind it, they're actually going to keep the data for five years on a running basis and it is searchable. So it'll be there on the Secretary of State's website for anybody that wants to peruse it.
And this is for all government agencies, including all the state agencies in charge?
Everybody.
Everyone who is subject to FOIA, yes, sir. So it would be all governmental agents, state government, state FOIA. So it's not going to be federal agencies, they're not subject to state FOIA, but any state government agency or local county government, municipal government that is subject to the Freedom of Information Act, which is essentially any governmental entity in the state of West Virginia, they're required to comply with this, this database.
Hey, one question. This may or may not, local political parties like the Republican Executive Committee, Democratic Executive Committee, are those included in this Freedom of Information Act?
I do not believe so. I don't really, I don't specifically know the answer to that question, but I've never looked at it. I don't think so because they're not, they're not state government entities or, or local government entities. They're political bodies.
But they're elected.
Well, they are, but not interstate law.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't believe so. Scott, you know, that's out of my, I'm not involved in any executive committee, so I don't know.
That's the most clarification I've had so far.
It doesn't sound like a governmental entity to me that would be subject to, it doesn't sound like it, but I think I'd take a little more research. Hey, jump real quick, what is the purpose? Is it to streamline? I mean, I think some requests in some towns are probably denied and granted in others. I mean, the litigation bringers, the internal memorandum section usually, is this to streamline so everybody knows, hey, hand over permits, hand over certain other records? I mean, what is the purpose really?
I have no idea. I really don't. I mean, I don't, I think it's going to get violated. Anybody that was going to violate the Freedom of Information Act to begin with is probably still going to violate it. still going to violate it.
They're still going to do it.
Right, yeah, I mean...
Not everybody has even computer systems. They still top them on Dyrator sometimes.
The mayor's example, 1998, is there not a timeline where you don't have to go back?
No, there's not. There's not. In fact, it's one of the things we talked about at the municipal league, and I wasn't aware of this, that the recorder, recorders, municipal league to the recorders association has actually put together a listing of how long you have to keep certain records and...
I think if you've got a viable, a legitimate records retention policy...
That's it, yeah.
Then you can enforce your policy and some things are five years and some things are 10 years, I believe, but if you've got a policy that you've touched out of 10 years, which most instances will make sense.
Right, I absolutely agree, Scott.
But you should have a retention policy.
You should.
And you have to follow it.
Yes.
Not just when it's convenient.
Do we have a retention policy?
Yes, we do. Do we have a policy or we just follow the guidelines?
It depends on the, it depends on the item. Everything's different.
City handbooks.
We use a handbook, but municipal league...
We do, it's not a...
That's the same, yeah.
It's not an enacted policy per se like we would do, but we do follow the guidelines by which the municipal league gives...
I wonder how much that database system costs a state?
We don't know. And quite honestly, we don't want to get off on the tangent because we're going to do it pretty good on this minute, but I just wanted to ask John, because John actually was at the municipal league, one of, well, he stood up as the expert, as the speaker that day to tell us a little bit about it, and there was quite a discussion on it, what the recorders association is going to do, since I sit on that board as well as a part of their policy board. I think we're going to come together as an organization, as a group, and go to the West Virginia Municipal League to ask them to take, actually take a look at this and see if there's something we can do through that body to eliminate some of the issues that we have as recorders or clerks on the extravagant ways in which some of these folks are asking for things. But there's no reason why you need 10 years or something of a purchase orders for somebody. So anyway, more to come on that, just so you know, and I hope that answered your question in space.
Oh, I'm sorry I asked.
I don't blame you. All right, so the next thing we have on our list, then, so that was the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. What I'll do is start with number four, under the strategic issues for discussion in four, this is E4, then we move down to F1. That is the approval of authorizing the mayor to issue a notice of award to Triton Construction regarding the water system improvements. Mr. Doss or Mr. Stump, is there anyone that needed to discuss anything on that? Very good. Denyed entertaining motion to approve resolution, I mean...
I'm doing the resolution first.
No, I'm doing the approval authorizing the mayor.
The resolution first.
Backwards?
Yes.
I did it backwards that time, didn't I? Yeah. All right, I did it backwards that time because I knew we were backwards the first time. So actually, what we have is...
It got me confused.
Yeah, thank you very much. We're, it's still just the strategic issues. We have resolution 2016-1, 2015-2016, the general fund budget revision. I'd entertain a motion to approve resolution 2016-1, 2016, general fund budget revision, but as it is a resolution, we need to do it by roll call. Mary Alba?
I don't know, she has to call.
Motion first.
Oh, Nancy, I was almost there.
I got a motion, I got a second.
There we go.
All in favor, well, now, now I have a roll call.
Yes.
Mayor, yeah, Mary.
Yeah, feature mayor.
Council on the side.
Yes.
Ron Pugh.
Yes.
Pam Pugh, yes, Dave Thomas.
I couldn't remember the water rate.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. All right, thank you so much. I apologize, folks, it's been one of those days.
It's all your fault.
All right, so now, we have resolution 2016-2, and that's the water bond resolution. I would entertain a motion to, entertain a motion to approve resolution 2016-2, water bond resolution.
Some of...
I got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a roll call vote for that. Mrs., Mrs. Jenkins?
Mrs. Jenkins.
She's going to call a vote.
Counsel call.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
Simons, yeah, Alba.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. All right, last but not least, finally, the approval of authorizing the mayor to issue a notice of award to Triton Construction regarding the water system improvements. I'd entertain a motion to approve such.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Thomas, you have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mrs. Alba. Any discussion on that? Does everybody know where we're at? I'm sorry I confused you all on that.
It's all right.
Thank you so much. All right, so I have a motion, a second, no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Did you, you go?
I'm getting tired.
Very much. Well, just so happens, luckily for you, Mr. Pugh, I'm going to give you, under comments announcements, the first discussion on that. Thank you, John, thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate it.
Be safe, gentlemen.
Yes, be safe.
I guess, and he goes...
I go first?
You go first.
I haven't had time to think about anything. No, everybody have a beautiful and wonderful weekend with the snow that we should have had for Christmas. It's the first Christmas I can remember where we've had all the lights in town put up and taken down without a drop of snow being on them. But if you look down East Main Street, if you go out with the snow tonight, it's beautiful with the period lighting going down the street. It is really a beautiful sight out through there. And be safe in the snow, don't take any extra chances that you shouldn't have. For God's sake, all you old men out there, don't shovel the snow and have heart attacks, okay? Let your children do that for you. Okay, and that's all I've got right now. Thank you.
I hope lifting, thank you, Ron. Mrs. Alba?
Oh, two things. Want to say thank you to the water department and also the sewer department because they do do a wonderful job. But I want to thank also the people who served on the animal control board and also I want to give a report, because I was very pleased with the outcome of our meeting the other night. Mayor, you did a wonderful job facilitating that animal control coordinator. Also, I want to speak a little bit real quick on the planning commission because I'm the city-appointed person on the planning commission and we had our first quarterly meeting this past Tuesday night. And Ann Levesey is the president of our planning commission. She's doing a wonderful job. We've got quite a group of people from here and yonder all around the city and our, I don't know what we're tasking, we're looking at parking issues, just part of something that came up from the 2015, or not 2015 plan, well, yeah, it was in there too, but it was also brought up recently at a town hall meeting about parking. So we were going to be talking about that and we got together and broke up in little sections. Two of our members are out there tonight, Robert Osborne and Tim Reese, I wanted to call him Lee Reese, gosh, and Tim. But we've had a very open discussion. Mr. Bryson Van Ostrom from engineering firm here in town had did a study. He officially turned that over to the planning commission and will be presenting this information to the mayor and council later on, but we're talking about parking issues throughout the community, not just Main Street and not just downtown area, some other issues too. We'll be working with the street department, Consolidated Public Works, and those meetings are open and we'll announce them and we hope that the members of the public, if you're interested in having input or knowing what's going on, that you come. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Mrs. Alba. Mrs. Capery?
Since Ron brought up the lights, I was really tempted to call the mayor and see if he'd leave the lights up until we had our first snow because I was anxious to see if the snow would be beautiful. But on to another note, I just want people to remember their neighbors this weekend during this snowstorm, especially elderly people to check on them, and also if you have pets, to make sure you bring pets in and just look out for each other. It's all messy.
Mrs. Capery? Mr. Pugh? No, I'm sorry, you've gone. Mrs. Simons?
Yes, I'd like to say that in the city, you are responsible for shoveling your sidewalk. If you have a neighbor, someone you know that cannot do it, and you are able to do it for them. And also the lights are back on to City Park. It's been a long time, but they are back on and that's great. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Simons. Mr. Thomas?
Couple, couple things. I did remember about the water rates and I wanted to emphasize that we do have very reasonable rates in our municipality compared to a lot of other cities, so that's really important to, we're very blessed by that, quite frankly. And a lot of it has to do with the length of service that we've had with individuals in those departments. That really is very, very helpful. And I also attended a development authority meeting yesterday and it was one of the most positive meetings I have attended in years. There's a lot of very interesting things, positive things that are happening, potentially happening. And the development authority, it does take time. You can't measure it just by one year to the next year. Sometimes it takes three to five years to accomplish what you're trying to achieve. I know Trust Joyce, I was involved in that to some degree years ago and we worked on it real hard, especially a few people. And we didn't get the first one, it went to Kentucky and we said, oh, gosh, you know, we wasted all our time, but a couple of years later we got the plan. So there's a lot of really neat projects going on. I'd like to see Rob Hitten come here sometime in the next month or two to report on all the very positive things that he's able to talk about publicly. I know the development authority got a $60,000 grant from the Benetton Foundation for a plan to look at the possibility of centralizing a distribution center for products grown in West Virginia to locate Buckhannon, Upshur County. That's just one of the examples that are out there. There's many more, that broadband, be a gigacity, just a whole bunch of things that he can talk about that I think would really, really just neat. I mean, just the example of tonight's meeting when we're looking at the possibility of putting $75,000 in the period lighting at the River Trail. All of these things make the enhancement of the city, the quality of life, really nifty for Buckhannon and Upshur County. And I still think at some point in time, I still think it would be the, with the permit fees, what we're looking there, doing, I still think there ought to be at some point in time, not in the next six months or sometime, we need a comprehensive look at our fees and the different taxes we have and, you know, what is appropriate for a town like Buckhannon? You know, the state probably will reinstitute the sales tax on food. I would not be surprised because they have a severe shortfall in their budget this year and next year. And one of the reasons why we never looked at a sales tax is because it would be, we wouldn't get much money because we don't have a tax on food. So, you know, a lot of things change and we need to be open-minded and take a look at different ways to enhance the quality of life for our citizens and residents. I also want to thank Maria Bray and Robin Keo and Alyssa Mills for putting the tremendous time and effort they put in the pet control ordinance. And I agree with Mary, the, when you get all these people involved with such passion, the mayor did bring, he kept us on task and the meeting was about two hours, two hours and 15 minutes, but we accomplished a lot. And I think when people see the draft of the new ordinance, it's a lot, a lot different to some degree than the last ordinance. And it's trying to get people to recognize that, you know, their animals, their dogs and cats are pets and they should be treated with compassion. Y'all have a safe weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, and thank you for the kind words. Actually, it was my pleasure to actually have that, but you know, this is what, that's something I really enjoy doing anyway, so I appreciate that. It was, it was actually fun for me to do, but it was quite, quite compassionate.
Talking about a new member of your family.
Yeah, well, I'm what they call a foster fail. I was fostering animals for our shelter so they didn't die. They would come to my house, but unfortunately, we kept ours for maybe one week too long and we've all fallen in love with it. So unfortunately, it is now a permanent Edwards family member, so, so much for being a foster parent on that.
What is it?
It's a pit bull.
Pit bull. And she's sweet, she's sweetheart.
All I want to say is thank you so much again, all of you for being here tonight as always. It's fantastic to have the citizens out. Thank you, Rodney, for being here. I do want to give one note of caution now to the citizens. You know, you're going to be hearing a lot about negativity in our city, about what's going on in our town during this time, within the next six months.
Yes.
Please do your research because I think as you've seen here tonight, there's a lot